We'll now come to order. Board members, you have the agenda for your... Is there motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Jackson? Second, by Mr. Preman. Are there any questions? And now, I'll say aye. Those who vote aye, right? Our agenda is approved as printed. Welcome, Ms. Roberts, our Chief Financial Officer, to the podium to give our FY 2024 General Fund budget work session two report. Ms. Roberts, please.
Good afternoon, President Jackson, board members, Superintendent Dr. Sims. This afternoon, we'll be talking about the FY 24 General Fund budget. This is our second work session. What we believe, our vision, each student would demonstrate street character and would be college or career ready. Our mission, the Bibb County School District develops a highly trained staff, an engaged community dedicated to educating each student for a 21st century global society. And our values are competence, loyalty, open communication, defined autonomy, and honor. And moving towards our new goals, this is the draft. A goal one, student achievement. All students will continually demonstrate high academic and social emotional growth, preparing them for life, college, and careers. Our second goal, staff effectiveness. All employees will excel daily in the performance of their roles to ensure our district thrives. And goal three, engagement. We will build collective ownership and active engagement amongst all stakeholders to maximize students' overall learning experiences. And of course, we want to make sure that our budget does align with all three goals. An overview, the purpose of the budget work session number two is to provide changes made to the proposed budget since March work session number one, and provide further information and receive board feedback. Our roadmap, we'll talk about what the changes to salary benefits and operations are with new information that we've received. We also will talk about some requested information from the board from work session number one, and we'll have discussions and questions. And then the takeaway, we want to come closer to finalizing the FY 24 budget where some things that are still missing is that we do not have the official QBE or the tax digest, but we do have some preliminary numbers from the state on QBE and strategize options to achieve the goal of a balanced budget by FY 2028. So let's talk about the general fund budget at this time. On this page, these are the same things that you saw at budget work session one, so I will not go over those in detail. But on the next slide, everything that's in red is what has changed since March. So the custodian salary increase of 1,000 that I mentioned in March has now been added to the new salary numbers. We've also received estimated QBE revenue from Godot, so an additional $608,112 has been added since March. We also have wonderful news from the state of Georgia that the equalization funding has increased by $7.3 million from 4.4 to $11.8 million. So that is definitely excellent news. Included a budget reduction for attrition with full or partial month vacancies throughout the year. We've added the Director of Employee Relations to the Human Resources Division budget. We've reduced operating costs by half a million. We've also adjusted investment income due to the continued benefit of the interest rates rising. And we've included bus replacement revenue and offsetting expenditures of 1.3 million. And then also, I mentioned in March that the governor had put in a 5.1% raise for bus drivers. So that has also been included in the budget. This is the same sheet that you saw in March, just reminding you of some of these things and the reason why we had changes in those expenditures. And this is a reminder of what the state health benefits will be increasing to, all the way up to FY 27 when the final classified state health benefit will take effect. Now let's talk about FY 23 and some revised budget projections. So here, you'll see in the first column of numbers what we have recommended under Budget Amendment Number One that was approved by the board. And in the next column is where we think we may end up now as we're closer to the end of the fiscal year. So we're saying here that we will have additional revenue of 9.2 million. And to the right, you'll see what that makes up, where it's from. So the QBE increase of our 243 students added an additional 1.9 million. QBE increase for certified state health for six months added 4.5 million. Increased investment income of 924,000. The 1.3 million for the bus replacement revenue that we will receive from Godot. And then other changes around 612,000. So that brings us to the total of the 9.3 million where our revenues have increased. Our salary and benefits from what we had originally projected for FY 23 has changed by almost 5 million. And then to the right, you'll see the explanation for that. 1.7 million is in salaries is from attrition for positions that stayed vacant throughout the year from transportation, coaching, supplements, AP, and counselor changes. And then the operations has changed by one... I'm sorry, I left out the benefits. The benefits, cost of the benefits has increased by over 3.3 million. And that's from the certified staff for six months' time. And then the operations has changed by 1.9. So we're expecting to increase our fund balance by 2.4 million. That would leave us with 25.8% ratio of fund balance to expenditures for FY 23. Here is the FY 23 official allotment sheet for mid-year. And here is the comparison of what our initial QBE allotment was, which was estimated at 112.3 million. And now, the unofficial that I showed you at work session one was 118.8 million, a variance of 6.4. And then the mid-year only changed $84 from what we had at the unofficial back at March. Next, we're going to turn back to FY 24 and look at the projections for it. On this slide, the very first line is what was reported in budget work session number one. We had estimated 56.8 to be the beginning fund balance, revenues of 226.8, salaries of 140.3, benefits of 69.1 million, operations 37.7, for total expenditures of 247.1 million, with the deficit being 20.3 million, which would have brought our ending fund balance down to 36.5 and the ratio being 14.8%. Next, you see all of the individual changes that we've had since the March time period. So in there, you'll see the custodians that I mentioned earlier, the 1,000 increase in their salary for net reduction of 88,000 to our fund balance. And then we added some expenditures in there for custodial substitutes of 53,000. And then we did budget for attrition for FY 24, saying that we would basically have about $1 million of our budgeted positions that probably we would not spend because of the various vacancies we would have, either for the full year or for partial months with all the different teaching positions and other positions. We've also, I mentioned, adding the Director of Employee Relations. And then we also reduced the departmental budgets by 590,000. And then we increased the investment income. And then that change that I mentioned in the QBE mid-year of the 7.3 equalization in revenue and the 1.3 million increase for the bus replacement funds, you'll see that as a revenue and also an expenditure. That is a grant that we only get the revenue that we spend, and that is the amount of that grant that's reported in the general fund. So with the new changes, our ending fund balance now has a deficit of 10.3 million for the year from the 20.3. And the ending fund balance would be 48.9 million. And the ratio of fund balance to expenditures, 19.8%. This right here compares the revenue from QBE from FY 24 and also between work session one and work session two. So you'll see I have in blue that the transportation unofficial number has not yet been received from the Georgia Department of Education. So that is a number that we're hoping will increase, but we do not know what amount. This just shows that from work session two to work session one, 8.2 million has been added, with majority of that, of course, being the equalization grant in the QBE revenue. Next, it shows that projected revenues slide that I showed you back in March with these changes. And I have footnoted the individual changes from the amended budget to the FY 24 work session two, and then also the changes from work session one to work session two. Now, this next slide takes the 24 budget work session number two and shows you the beginning fund balance now being 59.2, as we discussed earlier, with revenues of 237.2 million, expenditures of 247.5 million, with the surplus now being 10.3 million, with an ending fund balance of 48.9. And the ratio of fund balance to expenditures being 19.8%, which still is higher than the 15% maximum that the state requests. Now here, we're going to look at what the historical trend analysis has been and what we preliminary project. If we said no major reductions of expenditures, not making any changes with here to reduce that deficit and no increases in the millage rate, this is what it would look like. I have added a few other things into this, though, such as projecting an increase in QBE and also projecting that we would increase the FTE for the students by about 100 students a year. And also have changed, added the reduction that we're expecting indirect cost revenue that we're currently receiving from the ARP funds that will go away at the end of next year. And then for the expenditures on this assumption, you see on the first line, the projected salary and benefit increases that we have every year just for step increases. Those are for the years of services on our salary schedule. And then also, we're saying every other year we would receive an increase from the governor for our certified staff and a 2% for our classified staff that we would have as a minimum. And then also, you'll see on the next line, the phase in of the classified that takes all the way up to 2027 to get the full effect of the total amount that that will be. And then we're also showing some operational increases that have to come back to the general fund that are now in ARP that we've mentioned in the prior budget meetings. And that's where we're seeing about 4 million. Majority of that is for current software. And then we're also saying that the operational costs would increase at least 2%. And we'd also have to add back costs for summer school that is currently being paid out of ARP. So under this model, with not making any other changes but these, you would end up for '25, the fund balance to expenditure ratio of 12.4%, which is still within the range of 8 to 15. But you would see in '26, it would drop well below the 8% minimum. And then it would actually go into a deficit in '27. So we know we cannot allow that to happen. So here is how it would look as far as beginning fund balance, revenues, expenditures, but the same information. Next, we're going to look at a possible scenario for making some changes that go beyond what we've just discussed. So what are we trying to do to achieve? Or what are we considering doing to achieve the goal of a balanced budget? Well, we need to look at the rezoning options to reduce facility cost, examine programs that we have that can maximize savings if we make some changes. Also evaluating programs to maximize QBE earnings, reduce travel, reduce extra duty service agreements, consultants, reduce general supplies. We need to look at reducing personnel at school and the system level. Also, an option is to review the millage rate and make a decision not to roll back the rate. That's a possibility. And also the possibility of increasing a millage rate. So here are some of those potential ways and what it would save to reduce the expenditures. So I'll show you on a later slide the $1 million that is an average cost of if we were operate one less facility. Now, the reason I'm saying rezoning is after looking at the capacity of each school, there's nowhere where we can combine two schools into one. We would have to take students from one school and rezone them to at least two schools to be able to hold that number. And I have a slide later on that shows that capacity. Okay, and so one option would be to rezone two, rezone one school into three schools in '26 and then in '28. To another thing I'll show you the slide on is to limit pre-K teacher eligibility... Excuse me, tongue tied here. Eligibility to T4. This is saying that we can look at moving teachers with the higher certificate level to K5 positions where we would earn QBE, TNE on those. Currently, we do not earn TNE, DCal, not if they're in preschool, only if they're in K5. And then reduce travel paid from the general fund and these other items that we had mentioned earlier. So if we did this model in total, we could save $9 million out of the budget for upcoming years. And this is what it would look like if you put it in these five-year trend all the way up to FY 2029. Now, you'll see at the bottom, we're talking about millage rates. The highest the district can go in a millage rate is 20 mils. That's the max. So there's no way we could do... Get us to a balanced budget just by raising taxes. So it has to be a combination of reducing expenditures. And of course, this is just an assumption and a potential scenario. Nowhere am I saying that we should at this point in time raise a millage rate or do all of these changes. They're just options that would help us get to a balanced budget. We know that anything can change in QBE. If we could potentially get the same equalization number that we are getting this year with 11 million, that number could go back to 4 million just as easily. It depends on the tax revenues of all the districts in the state of Georgia and how we rank. We ranked lower this year since a lot of districts had increased tax revenue by not rolling back their rates, whereas we rolled ours totally back. So therefore, that dropped us down in the rankings because we did not receive that additional tax revenue that other districts did. So you'll see this is showing that potentially, if we just made a decision not to roll it back but to keep the millage rate at the rate that it is, we would receive roughly 900,000 each year. And that number will change, too, as we get digest numbers because that could be higher or it could be lower depending on how the digest fluctuates for the inflationary portion of the change in the digest. So this particular scenario would only get us up to a millage rate of 19.2 by the year of 2026. Now, of course, if you did not want to change a millage rate or if we had other revenues coming in, then we would have to reduce expenditures by more than what I'm projecting here. So this is one option. This would show what making these changes would do to our fund balance and to our fund balance expenditure ratio. For FY 24, we could bring it up to 20.16 if we just did not roll back the millage rate. In '25, 15.29%. And you would see that we stay within that 15% that we like to be at with this scenario. Next, let's look at some of the information that was requested by the board from work session number one and also that they play a part in the numbers that I just presented. So this is the next few slides. It's the same sheet you saw in work session one with the pre-K column with the pre-K numbers added and the capacity of the school. So that's how many students the school is built to serve and how many students with considering K12 and pre-K that we are underutilized. So for instance, Alex II would only hold 22 more students. But then if you look at a Hurd, it would hold 222 more students. But this will just give us some information going forward for next year that we could really start looking at closer and making some decisions about, do we need to rezone or not? And also, I've included the new numbers for the salaries, benefits, and operations that match the numbers for work session number two, whereas last month's had the numbers for work session one. So that changed your cost per student and your average benefit rate. After this, this is how I calculated the savings of 1 million, the average savings. If you did some consolidations of schools or some rezoning, you would save the cost of a principal on average, two assistant principals, a media specialist, a media clerk, a secretary, an office clerk, a registrar, an attendance clerk, head custodian, and regular custodian. So you could on an average, say, save 12 positions out of the general fund at a cost of $943,000, savings of that. You also potentially would save teachers, but you'd really have to look at which schools you were combining students and what grade level to see how many teachers you could potentially save. Operational cost, the average cost of the electricity, the water, and the garbage and office supplies could also be saved by operating one less facility for 71,294. And that's how we come up with the $1 million that I showed in the previous slides. And then you also save roughly seven positions in your school nutrition services because you would have one less school nutrition manager, cashier, assistants, and monitors. So that would be another savings in the school nutrition of roughly 187,000. Next is the cost to implement the classified salary study. So Mr. Fraser has received some information on the salary study as late as Friday. So this right here just explains the options. The first one is to bring new minimum to the closest step, so a calculation performed so that each employee's salary is adjusted to the minimum of their classification's proposed pay grade. And if their salary is already within that range, then no adjustment would be made. The employee is then moved to the next highest closest step. So a part of this would be, the second part would be to classier parity. And that option realigns the employee's salary within their recommended range based on how long they've worked in their current classification. And then the years of experience, this option places employees on the step that correlates to their years of experience as determined by the HR department. So option one, which takes this phase one of bringing it to the million minimum, that would be 777,000 cost. Classier parity, doing half, part of the grades, 101 to 110 in the first phase, would be an additional 1.8 million. Phase three, which would take those next grades of 111 to 127, that would be an additional 1.8 million. So this particular option would be 4.3 million. And the full implementation by 2025 is the recommendation of the company that did the salary study for us. And the value of a mil right now is running roughly 4.8 million. And so the cost to implement this would be 0.89 mils. Or, as you saw earlier, we had already are considering the need, if things do not change in our revenues, that we would already be too high to actually do an additional millage. So we would have to reduce expenditures by 4.3 million to be able to get to this salary study option. The second option is taking that same, bringing new to the new minimum, cost of 777,000. And then looking at the years of experience from grades 101 to 110, cost of 2.3 million. And phase three, years of experience raised for all employees, an additional 2.8 million for a total for this option of 5.9 million, which the cost would roughly be 1.23 mils to be able to do this part of the salary study. Next, I wanted to give you some information on pre-K. This right here is the DCal salary schedule for pre-K teachers for 2023. And they, too, will receive the 2,000 raise. So the new salary scale is not available for me to pull down. So what you would do is just take the total salary at each of these levels and add 2,000 to it. So this takes all of our pre-K current teachers and puts them by their certification and their years of service and gives you what DCal would pay for that individual. For instance, the first one, the DCal would pay 45,000 and the district pays 48,202. So for that particular grade and step, we pay 3,200 additional dollars for that person. And then multiply it by the number. We have five in that particular grade and step. Cost is 20,544. And then if you go all the way down on the right side, these are some of your higher degreed individual teachers. these are some of your higher degreed individual teachers. And you'll see that the difference becomes higher. And the total unfunded cost to the district with salaries and benefits is 683,598. That's how much we fund over and above what Decal would pay for, for our pre-K teachers. Because remember, we pay our pre-K teachers on the same level as all of our other teachers, even though Decal does not fund us in that mechanism. And the only reason I wanted to kind of show this is one option would be to look at those teachers, say, that were higher than a T4 and move those to grades one through five because we would get more funding for those individuals because we would get the TNE for them and have at our pre-K teachers with lower certificates. So if you did that for the current staff that we have, you could save an additional 168,155 just by making a conscious decision of which, how high of a degree level our pre-K teachers would have. Now, the next slides are a comparison of the QBE program, district expenditures to what we get from QBE in funding. So if you look at kindergarten, for instance, the district has 150 kindergarten teachers. QBE says we only earn 95. So we have 55 additional kindergarten teachers than what we're getting funded for. And that's because of our class size and the number of elementary schools that we have so that it's spread out more. And then if you go down to, say, grades nine through 12, the district has 220 teachers. QBE says for the number of high school students that we have, we should be able to utilize only 179 teachers. So that's 41 teachers that we have over and above what we're funded for. So, so this is just information so that we can see that we are, we do have more teachers that we're getting funded for and the cost of that is 41 million. Now, of course, we have to pay the local fair share. That's 18.4 million. That's what the state is saying that we, they expect us to have teachers and pay for that amount of money. But over and above that, we have 41. Okay, so that's the end of my presentation. The next item on the agenda is for Session Number Three, May 16th at 5 o'clock. And now I'll open it up to questions.
Thanks, Ms. Roberts. We'll now be open for questions. I'll hand it up to Boyd, Tom, and the panel will take questions in that order.
Ms. Roberts, thank you. As always, amazing of you to get all those figures together and make them sound good. Okay, I need clarification on the pre-K thing. What that is, is the salary supplement that we pay.